Wherever you want.
You can sit here. I didn't invite you last time.
Huh?
I didn't invite you last.
No, I'm fine.
You run home and eat?
Huh?
Did you run home and eat?
No.
Oh, you just ran out.
I just went out. Yeah. I wanted to jump on a call.
Good evening. It is Monday, April 25th, and I welcome everyone to the Maple Plains City Council Meeting. It is 7:20, 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Move by Fay.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries four to one. First item of business this evening is swearing in of Deputy Fire Chief Dennison, and I will turn that over to Fire Chief McCoy.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're here for a swearing in for Rick Dennison, Maple Plains Fire Department Deputy Chief. Firefighting is one of the world's most honored but dangerous occupations, and when there's an emergency in the community, our firefighters are always the first on the scene, and firefighters are there at devastating fires, motor vehicle accidents, tornadoes, hopefully we don't have any of those this year, but hazardous hazmat incidents, rescue operations, explosions, medical emergencies, and many other critical incidents. Basically, when they don't know who to call, they call the fire department, and our firefighters are there to serve our communities. Firefighters are servants as warrant officers and following our standard policies and procedures in our fire service, and they're there to prevent human suffering and death and to stabilize any incidents that they're called to and prevent damage and loss to property. It is a great honor for me to have this opportunity to swear Rick Dennison in as our Deputy Fire Chief Deputy Chief. You want to come up, Rick? All right. You can stand there, sir, as long as the camera gets, is he on camera? So raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Rick Dennison, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America in the state of Minnesota against all enemies, both foreign and domestic, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as Deputy Chief of the Maple Plains Fire Department under the appointment of the department according to the laws of Minnesota, the county of Hennepin, the cities we serve, and to the best of my skills and abilities, so help me God. Congratulations, Rick, and great to have you part of the leadership team. Anybody else like a picture with Rick? Come on up.
Thank you. Do you want all your officers?
Yeah, we will get one here and then that.
Do you want to have, you know, some Maple Plains?
Yeah.
Sit here in the middle. Thank you. Okay, you ready?
Then if the other officers and Tammy, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you. And I know they are off to a training burn, so thank you for coming and cleaning up for the meeting and for your service. All right, next we will turn it over to Commissioner Kevin Anderson, and thank you for your flexibility and being willing to come tonight.
Thank you so much for, for having me here. I'm not sure if I'm clicking through or somebody else will.
I think it's right there.
I'll let you, I'll let you click through. So, thank you, Mayor and City Council for, for having me here. My name's Kevin Anderson. I am the Hennepin County Commissioner, serving District Seven. For those of you who are not familiar with me, I was elected in 2020 and have been serving since January of 2021. I stepped into the role with 20 years of experience in IT work, so not government work. This is a bit of a transition. Had a lot of volunteer experience with my, my local church, scouts, dance, you know, the normal volunteer stuff that parents do. I have four young kids, a wife, we live in Maple Grove. As my, my role in Hennepin County, I am the Chair of the Public Works Committee. I also serve on a number of other committees you can see in the, the presentation, Vice Chair of Human Services, the Audit Committee, Hennepin History Museum, and such. We can go on to the next. I'll save this, save you from this. So, one of the things that was very enlightening for me to, to work on over the last year was the Hennepin County budget. Hennepin County has the largest budget in Minnesota outside of the state of Minnesota at almost $2.5 billion. So it's a big task to see how that money is being spent. Now about $800 million of that is through property taxes. The other funding comes through state and federal sources. Another thing that we worked on over the last year was our distribution of ARP monies. We had nearly $250 million of ARP money allocated, and we tried to prioritize that through our county priorities, mainly economic recovery, our housing, broadband expansion, mental health services, and violence prevention where we can intervene. One of the largest buckets that we had put money towards in the ARP was $85 million nearly in housing stability. This kind of crossed the range of supportive housing, AHIF, home conduit financing, and working with developers to build more product in our housing market. We've tried to do this in a way that will support as many people as possible and fill in gaps where they existed. A lot of gaps currently exist in the very low-income area at 50% and 30% AMI or less, and so that's where a lot of the county's resources ended up going. Another area that we invested in, we put $10 million into broadband expansion. The work that we were trying to do with this was twofold. We tried to work with communities in identifying where people did not have existing broadband connections at all. A number of our western suburbs are experiencing this, and so we've been trying to partner with cities to help fill in the gaps with their providers. The other area is working with affordability for residents who can't afford it. Hennepin County is the social safety net of, in Hennepin County, so that, you know, over the last two years, if one thing is extremely clear is that operating without an internet connection is really, really detrimental to staying on your feet. Another thing that I've been personally very invested in is trying to make sure that veterans experiencing homelessness are able to get back on their feet as quickly as possible. I've been privileged to be able to work with the Minnesota Assistance Council for Veterans, or MACV, and a few months ago, we and another Commissioner Irene Fernando worked to sell four properties that were tax forfeited to MACV so that they could build supportive housing for homeless veterans. It's a small piece, but it's going to be a part of the, the solution so that we can actually make sure that no veteran is experiencing homelessness in Hennepin County. Another thing that I did during the budgeting process, it became apparent, or I became aware, that Hennepin County actually didn't have a monument honoring veterans on county property, and I discovered that when we became a beyond-the-yellow-ribbon county, and we had to acknowledge or celebrate that achievement in, at a city's monument. And so during the last budget cycle, I advanced and the board approved money to fund a monument on county property at the Government Center. So, we're going to do our part to make sure that veterans are, are honored in Hennepin County, so. We are moving back to normal, as many of us already have been, but Hennepin County has been transitioning back to, the return to what the new normal will be. We're calling it Future Ready Hennepin. Basically, this is a return to a hybrid work model where some employees will be coming back into the office perhaps two, three days a week. Our goal through this work is to reduce our downtown footprint by about 20%, so we have less facilities to maintain and can go a little bit further with our tax dollars. This transition started at the beginning of this month, will continue through June. I'm really looking forward to having our first in-person board meeting, which I have not actually had an in-person board meeting. I've met city councils more than I have in person, my board, so I'm really looking forward to that. Another thing that we had introduced and worked on over the last now two cycles is gun violence prevention. We have seen, I mean, we've all seen the headlines. Gun violence in Minneapolis has been through the roof, and so I, along with our Commissioner colleagues, have acknowledged that publicly and put resources in two separate $5 million funding towards gun violence prevention. Now, the county is not responsible for policing, so the capacity that we have was partnering with community organizations that deal directly with violence intervention in areas that were known to be high violence and high-risk areas, namely areas with high gang activity, and so we put this money to intervene and interrupt some of that violence. We saw some good measure, good improvement with the first round, which prompted the second round. We will see how it, how it plays out. I think that the, the intervention piece is part of the puzzle. Another part of the puzzle is our mental health supports, which we invested also quite heavily on. We, the mental health component in Hennepin County, we invested a lot of our ARP money into making sure that we had dollars to school-based mental health, culturally-specific mental health, reforming 911, so that the appropriate response going in when responding to a call can be achieved. Another big thing that we did was expanding the hours at 1800 Chicago, which is a emergency mental health crisis facility that has beds. We expanded those hours to 24/7. That was one of the items that, when I talked to the Director of Public Safety out here, he had said that if they could have access to facilities 24/7, because very often when they're responding with emergency calls, it's not during business hours, and so making sure that we had resources available when people needed them was at the top of our priority. Another area that we invested in was the North Metro, I'm going to get this right because it's a mouthful here, North Metro Regional Public Safety Training Facility. We expanded that facility. It's located in Maple Grove, but it serves law enforcement agencies across not only Hennepin County but Minnesota and the region, and it serves a particular use for us as Hennepin County so that our deputies have access to a training facility and a range so that they can go through all the training that they need as we're hiring new, new deputies to backfill positions that have been empty. Another area that has been remarkably successful has been our embedded social worker program. Communities are partnering with Hennepin County. We're covering about half the cost for this per social worker to work in the police department so that as they're getting calls, it may not be on co-responder, but when they identify an individual that is better served by a social worker than a police officer, they can hand that case over to a social worker who is on staff, and in some cases have seen a, a reduction in call volume by up to 80%. It's been really remarkable. And so we're making this, we've kind of doubled down on the investment to make sure that it's accessible to any community that is looking to adopt this, and you can see a lot of the suburban Hennepin County communities have, and when we made this available, they've kind of said, all right, we want our own. They often started it by sharing resources with other communities and then said, no, we, we need our own resource dedicated full-time. So, with that, I think I took up enough of your time, but I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for the Commissioner?
I have one. So you talked a lot about the expansion of housing resources, which is fantastic. We've seen, I think, an increase here in our community with people experiencing homelessness. Are there any resources more out here that we can send them to, or is it mostly in this city right now?
So, our housing, we're going to actually be presented with this in, in the next month here. The resources are available to really any community that would like it. As far as building houses, we're partnering with developers, and we're trying to, a lot of this is focused on whether or not the, the project, specific project, has an affordability component, usually 60% AMI or less. So if those, if there are projects that include that, please do get in contact with me, and I'll get in contact with the, the right people so that we can get some of those resources out here, because we have that money available, and we would love to have it available to you too.
Other questions for the Commissioner? Well, I'd just like to thank you for your time, and I appreciate your partnership and investment. I know every month you come out to the Northwest Hennepin League and meet with the Mayors as well, and we appreciate the collaboration and the communication.
Absolutely. It's, it's my pleasure. Like I said before, I always love coming out here, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And I will give this. I'm not allowed to have that much.
Do we have any visitors to be heard tonight? All right. Next item of business is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes city council meeting minutes, Thine Well Prevention Maintenance Contract, 2022 turf management, employee leave policies, and seasonal staff.
I would like to pull the February 14th and February 28th workshop minutes.
Okay. Pull the February 14th and February 28th workshop minutes.
I would also like to pull the February 28th council meeting and the March 21st council meetings.
February 20th and March 21st? Okay. And I would like to pull seasonal staff. So with that, what minutes are left? 14, 28, and 31? So, looking for a motion to approve the February 7th City Council Special Meeting and March 21st Council Workshop, Thine Well, and then B through D on the consent agenda. So moved. Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries four to one. Let's go back and we'll start, or Cahill, why don't you start?
Just as we mentioned at workshop, the February 14th and the February 28th workshop minutes deviate from our, the policy we've kind of gone with to try and keep them simplified to what was discussed and what action was taken, so I would just ask that those two minutes be sent back to staff to be simplified. Were yours the same concern?
Mine were the same concern and mine too. So I'd ask that those go back to staff to be rewritten.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All right. Staff, any questions? Okay. I had pulled the seasonal staff. I was under the understanding that we needed to post that position, and just wondering if I missed it or if there was a change?
No, in discussing it with personnel and determining kind of the workload for this year and, and the benefits and the, the interactions that I've had with our past seasonal staff, I'm confident that we'll be able to, to work through another year with our past. I did discuss it again with Personnel Committee, and that's the recommendation.
All right then. Looking for a motion to approve seasonal staff and then pulling and redoing the workshop minutes from the 14th and the 28th of February and council minutes from the 28th of February and March 21st.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries four to one. Next item of business this evening is Accounts Payable, and I will turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing too terribly exciting, I think, on Accounts Payable. Sorry, let me, did council members have any questions specifically?
Any questions? All right, then we will take this in two motions. First, looking for a motion to approve the city check batch. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Second motion is to approve the fire partnership check batch.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Fay, second by DeLuca. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Next item of business is our staff reports, and this month, we are fortunate to have most of our staff here with us to give us a brief overview of their report in addition to their very detailed written reports. So we will start with our city planner.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Nice to everybody tonight. This report is for the past month, really, end of March being end of April. Couple of just kind of key pieces. We continue to have a lot of activity on 5370, Highway 12. That's a large industrial building there. We've been having questions on kind of existing use and, and future use of that property. The city did put together with the city attorney and myself a letter that outlined kind of the position of that building. It's a legal non-conforming building in the city, and so there's some, a lot of questions just about what can be done and, and how it can be done, and so we've been talking a lot about that building. As you know, we presented the 1520 Wyman Avenue Surrany Village Plan to the Planning Commission, had a really high-level turnout, and as you know, that application was withdrawn formally by the applicant following that meeting, and so we are back in a place where the city is going to continue to hear requests and a lot of questions on what the use of that building is. I think we're going to try to sit down with the CASIA owners in the next couple of weeks to talk about not only reuse but potential, maybe reuse that site. I'm maybe thinking about that site differently than just within the box that's there now, so. We'll see where that goes. You'll be involved with some of those conversations here in the, in the future, so. And then we have a preliminary plat application at 1701 Baker Park. That was a concept plan that came before the council. It was submitted to the city, and we had requested additional information on a couple of different levels, and they finally got us kind of all of that, so I expect that that's going to start coming forward here for consideration, which would be a new plat for the city to look at. And then we have a couple of more requests for 1515 industrial. Not very exciting, but we do have a lot of antenna replacement that goes on, and this is happening everywhere right now, so we're seeing all the, all the LTE 3G antennas getting swapped out, so we're just getting a lot of different requests, so you'll see those coming through our Planning Commission next month. Outside of that, we are really making a hard push to finalize the comp plan and just get it approved by Met Council, so I'll keep you updated on that, but I expect that you'll see something back here shortly to, to kind of do a final approval on that, or, it's not really a final approval, it's their approval, then we just kind of certify that it's approved. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the report.
Any questions? Thank you very much for being here. Next is our report from West Hennepin Public Safety, and the chief sends his regrets that he can't be here tonight. So if we have questions, we can direct those to Clarissa, and she will get those. Any questions for chief? Please, chief? Okay. Next is city engineer, and I see David out there, so we'll invite you to the microphone.
Good evening. Start, I'd like to start tonight by introducing one of our other engineers who's with me tonight. Matt Baumann over there is here for a couple of reasons. One is he has expertise related to the Water Main Project that we're going to be talking about tonight, so I asked him to be here. He worked on that project. And then also, now we're about two years into our stint as your city engineer, so we just continue to build our team, provide you with some expertise. I've asked Matt to start coming to some of these meetings with me, just to again have some, somebody else that's aware of what's going on and help with our responsiveness for your needs. I'm not going anywhere, that's not the intent of this, but again, just if, if I'm for whatever reason not available, to have somebody that can kind of just step in and is already aware of the issues and, and what's going on here in the city. So you'll be seeing a little bit more of Matt around here going forward. As far as my report goes, kind of some of the routine things with the city staff meetings, just miscellaneous things that I work with Dylan and Clarissa on, on an ongoing basis, some of the, the planning things that Marcus talked about, comp plan, we've, we've had some discussions about that. We've also attended a pre-construction meeting for the, the Medina project that's going on over by the Subway Holiday off of Baker Park Road. They're, they're getting Maple Plain water as part of that project, so we participated in that pre-construction meeting with them, just to make sure we know what's going on and that are, they're aware of our expectations when they tie into those facilities. A couple things here, we'll, we'll talk in more depth here later on the agenda, but we've opened the bids, as you're aware, on the Water Main Project, and then also we'll talk a little bit more about sewer planning later on in the agenda. Then the last thing I wanted to just address is the 2022 street project. At least some of you were copied on an email from a resident that had some concerns about our proposed improvements for the coming year. We took a look at that in a little bit more depth. It's kind of the Amy Lane cul-de-sac, and then there's a piece, a portion of Parkway up in that area, and the concern was that the condition of that road is beyond where we should be considering a mill and overlay. So we've taken a closer look at that. A lot of the issues that are happening there are drainage-related, and if you drive that area out, you'll see a lot of places where the pavement's settled below the lip of the gutter. And if you drive that area, you'll see a lot of places where the pavement's settled below the lip of the gutter. We've lost the crown in the road, a lot of curb and gutter that's settled, things like that. So what I would agree with is this is not an ultimate fix as far as trying to get us 20, 30 years of improvement with the mill and overlay we're proposing. But we do believe that a mill and overlay with those other spot repairs and patching out there certainly extends the life of that road to a point where we're getting our money's worth and basically buying ourselves some time before we're considering completely reconstructing that road, going through the process that we've gone through with the other reconstructions and assessments and those sorts of things. So wanted to bring that to you, kind of just let you know our thought process on that. And then I guess give you a chance to let me know if you have any concerns with that. If you're okay with us moving forward, what I would propose is I'll reach out to that property owner, probably meet him out there, make sure, one, that we fully understand their concerns, but also kind of talk him through our thought processes to why we believe that the improvements that we have proposed are appropriate at this time.
Dave, you don't see any reason to move that up on our street improvement plan, do you?
You know, it's not an area that we've really identified for utilities or anything like that. I guess my thought would be, we have some other priorities where we have some utility needs that I still think would have priority from a reconstruction standpoint. And if addressing the surface and some of the drainage helps us, again, buy some time before we have to get into that, I think that that's appropriate.
Okay.
Dave, now that you did the engineering and the spec work when there was still snow on the ground, so streets and curbs were covered with snow. Now that you've been out to Amy Lane, I'm sure you've had a chance to drive the city and the mill and overlay streets. Is there anything that you have witnessed in this particular project that caught your attention that you didn't catch because it was under snow or?
No, not necessarily, because if you recall, too, when we were giving you some information, putting that CIP together, you know, we had been looking at the roads for a while. So I think the biggest thing is that, to a certain extent, we'll get a better sense of once we start doing some milling, but it's going to be the amount of patching. How much patching do we have to do? The Amy Lane area is one that is interesting when you look at the typical section that was built to. That was the first addition, the lens addition, I believe it was called. Yep. And, you know, there's, that does have a pretty thin pavement section compared to some of the other areas in town. So that might be one where the patching ends up being a little bit more extensive in that area. But I guess right now, we feel comfortable that we've kind of accounted for that in our quantities.
Other questions for Engineer? Thank you for being here and for your time. Next, we'll hear from Dylan with People Service and our Public Works.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a few things from the last quarter that I had for goals from the last time I was here. Was getting some more work orders put into our maintenance program. And we did get quite a few put in, a lot more. I think initially, we only had like 10, now there's closer to 30. And we did get a lot of the annual inspections from outside sources done this first quarter, which was another goal that we had. And just the biannual street sweeping and hydrant flushing was both completed last week. Street sweeping Wednesday, flushing on Friday. Yeah, and just getting a lot of the work orders done that are more time-consuming in the winter. You know, just before the busy season of the spring. And just working on more of the treatment process at the water treatment plant for savings and better water quality. And some of the goals that I put for next quarter is just to get started on the four-year sewer jetting plan now that we have worked with Bolton and Mink and got a televising and kind of know some of the bad spots. Kind of just put a four-year plan together so we can continue that. And yeah, just finish up pothole filling, doing spring cleanup in the parks, and kind of get the water turned on at Veterans and Meadows Park and get the irrigation systems opened up. And work on getting some crosswalks repainted. I know there's a lot of bad, bad crosswalks in town. Never got to that last year and is on the contract that we have with the city. So we will want to hit that. And just continue to follow the operational plan as listed with the contract, so. If you have any questions?
I do.
Okay. Councilmember Fay.
Are we starting a plan either through People Service or Administration for this transition for the radioed water meters that that contract has been canceled? Is that correct?
So I just mentioned this very briefly in our, in the update, I think. Correct, the email update? So we had thought we had had a plan essentially, and then we got more information. So we kind of, we brought in our vendor and had a more in-depth meeting, again, with a different staff member from that vendor who was able to kind of coach us through. So we are going to sit down, review it again as staff, and put together a little bit better narrative. And because it is kind of complicated, there are a lot of nouns that, like making sure you understand exactly what we're talking about. So I'm always trying to refocus on the things that we're talking about. But we had tentatively planned that for the May 9th workshop to discuss that further.
So it is in process?
Yeah, yep. It's in process. It's not urgent, but it does need to be addressed at some point this year, ideally, yeah.
And then, in honor of Councilmember DeLong, I have a question on chemicals. In, at this time in 2020, we had spent $1,100 on water chemicals. The next year in '21, same time, 67% through the year, we spent $3,900 in chemicals. We are up to $10,000 in chemicals. Is it the cost of chemicals have gone up 100% or are we using more chemicals in our water?
We are actually using less chemicals. Hawkins bought out DPC, so they kind of have a monopoly on the water treatment for a municipality, for the chemicals in the state. So on top of chemical prices rising, now they're kind of got control of the market. So prices are a lot higher. We have been using less. There should be all that info in the council reports that I send monthly on how much chemicals we use.
Yeah, it's a tenfold in two years.
Tenfold in price?
Tenfold in price.
Yeah.
Two years, okay. All right.
Other questions for Dylan? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next, we will turn it over to Fire Chief McCoy.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. You should have my report in your packet. Just kind of go quickly over some of the highlights that we've had in the last month or so and then entertain any questions for you. Kind of the biggest highlight we had in March was a fun event of celebrating Dave Isiger and Bart Kuski's retirement with over 71 years of combined service. So that's always a fun time to celebrate People's Service and to our communities. And it's probably only eclipsed by when we bring somebody new on the department to kind of take their place, so. In March, we responded to 28 incidents. I just kind of attached the statistical analysis of that. We did have six mutual aid calls in March. Three of those was the same address in Orno, and that was the North Shore Marina Fire, the initial call. And then we were called back to assist twice on Rekindles. We were up to Loretto once, Watertown. And then we got paged out to a, I forget, was Brooklyn Park by mistake or some goofy thing. So it was, anyway, it qualified as mutual aid call, but we didn't go. Some of the activity in our coverage area, we had a house fire on Pyrenees Creek Road. It was a kitchen fire related to cooking. The homeowner self-evacuated. The first arriving police officer hit the stove top fire with a fire extinguisher and slowed it down. And it fires, I think the statistics on them, they double every 60 seconds. So again, that was, basically was a room and contents fire. And but, and they had to find a place for the homeowner to stay. On March 5th, I already talked about the mutual aid to structure fire in North Shore Marina. Responded to the ladder and the tanker as there's no water hydrants in that particular area. March 25th, we were accustomed to a house fire in Watertown. Responded with an engine and crew. And basically, we're kind of the standby crew for Watertown. Anytime they have a major structure fire and their resources are exhausted, we respond to stand by at their station and answer any additional calls that come in for their department. On kind of the flip side, Watertown kind of fills that role for us unless it's on the western part of our coverage area. Then they're a primary mutual aid company that helps us out. Tanker 12, we were responding to a house fire on that and it failed. And we got it in for repair. We had to tow it back to our station. And we had a little difficulty in finding a repair shop to take care of it. We eventually, McQueen Emergency, Fire Emergency Vehicles in Apple Valley works on diesel and diesel transmissions. And they agreed to get it in right away and look at it. We just got it back and got it back in service. And that repair bill is a little north of $11,000, so a quarter of our maintenance budget. But when you got a truck with 300, 400,000 miles on it, I guess it's expected to have repairs like that once in a while. Tended some by weekly staff meetings, met with our officers. And Rick Dennison on personnel changes was, obviously, was sworn in tonight. And then Holden Moes, probationary firefighter, he's completed all his training well ahead of the end of his probationary period, which is in June. And will be back on the agenda to approve the, end of his probation and is a full-fledged firefighter coming up in the next month, so. Have a party in the park scheduled as a community event on June 4th. And training in March, we covered quite a bit of area. We had our EM, first responder training refresher. We required to do eight hours of that each year. So we do four hours in the spring and four hours in the fall. And one of the hands-on scenarios that kind of was pretty sobering, actually, was how do you do CPR on a firefighter that's gone down in full gear and with SCBA on? So we practiced quite extensively on extracting a firefighter from his gear quickly along with his SCBA and then doing the CPR. So spent quite a bit of time on that. Again, it's kind of a sobering deal with her because we're always doing it on somebody else. We don't, never want to do it on one of our own, so. Especially, so anyway, that was kind of, kind of a different hands-on training that we've done. Bloodborne pathogens, which again is a required training, lockout, tagout required training. We had men fire in to do firefighter health and cardiac arrest. Blue card refresher, blue card certification for nine firefighters, additional firefighters. And then did NFPA 1021 leadership training and then our monthly truck inspections. So that's about all I have. Any questions on anything?
Any questions for the Chief?
Again, thank you.
Thank you so much for your service. Next, we'll turn it over to our administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Trying to categorize all these, the things that we do. So I would say, you know, a lot of this first quarter is spent managing the, or, you know, helping Bonnie at ABDO with the audit process and getting to those accurate 2021 year-end financials. You'll recall, you know, we had a lot of shifting last year as far as how we were coding things, a new chart of accounts. And so we just wanted to make sure everything was getting entered appropriately according to those kind of new strategies. And then, of course, getting our reporting to you folks, the quarterly and financial, or quarterly and monthly financial reporting spreadsheets that we do, kind of finalizing those and getting Sharon trained in on those as well. We are trying to add another staff member, so just trying to do a little bit of recruiting and kind of getting all of those things in order for that and kind of reworking our current staffing and making sure everybody is moving forward in the right direction. Getting our summer projects in line. So we've got some smaller projects happening at the parks this year. I've been working with Councilmember Fay on his lighting project that's, will be talked about later tonight. We've got some tree planting that will happen. We've got the Denny's Eagle Scout project, which you will hear about. And then we're also, we have it on the CIP to redo some of the playground curbing, so trying to get that in line. And then, of course, we have our major projects, so working with Dave Martini, Todd Hagan from, for bonding and then, and just trying to get those projects all in line. And then lots and lots of other, just sort of miscellaneous, keeping our ducks in a row and afloat and keeping everything moving forward. Any questions?
Well, thank you very much for your hard work and keeping us afloat.
Thank you.
With that, I am looking for a motion to receive all staff reports, A through F.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fay.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four to zero.